Good evening. It's being May 26, 2022. This is the Acushnet Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Your names, please be kind enough to introduce yourselves, starting with Doug.
Dr. Level, town planner.
Mark Francois, member.
Brian DeChamps, member.
Mark Settumrizio.
Rick Ellis, member.
Oh, all right. I didn't see you there, David. Big smile. Thank you.
You only get half a vote today.
With that, I'd just like to, a moment of silence for John Coverall. He was on the planning board many, many, many years ago.
Wow, must have been a long time.
Yeah. A moment of silence for the passing of John. John was a member of the Acushnet Planning Board, a lifetime member of the Acushnet BFW, president of the Jolly Sees of Acushnet, and he worked as a consultant aging. He worked in the Acushnet Board. John was 95 years old. God bless him. We just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. With that, this meeting is being YouTube, audio, and videotaped.
And Zoomed.
And Zoomed. With our favorite Zoom person, Brother David. Thank you. With that, I don't want a public hearing. Form out requests for site plan review, Acushnet Company, testing facility, business center. That's 115 Manchester Lane. With that, gentlemen, please feel free to get up, tell us who you are, introduce yourself, tell us what you like. A little cricket, is that all right? Can you deal with that?
Well, it's fine.
Yeah, he's got you on the TV. Don't worry.
All right. I'm Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the Acushnet Company. Also with me is Charles Sands. He's the facilities manager for Acushnet Company. And Keith Boyle, he's the project architect for Cube3 Architects. They're the firm that designed the building on the site. And the design of the building on the site necessitated us to do a site plan. The building is going to consist of about 9,924 square feet. That's where it is right now. We are looking, doing some value engineering on the structure, trying to, you know, figure out where the final dollars are going to end up. But we don't expect any substantial changes to the plan. You know, but there may be a foot or two here and there change. Predominantly, I think finishes and things inside and outside the building are things that are a primary concern right now with the pricing and the work and the job. But we're here in front of the planning board for site plan review. The building exceeds 5,000 feet. We have in excess of 12,000 square feet of impervious area on the site. So that requires us to come before the planning board for site plan approval. This site is 138 acres, a little better than 138 acres off Manchester Lane. The project area in and of itself is approximately 2.7 acres. It's, right now, there's an existing building down there where the hitting machines are housed. There's a couple of offices, places for people to operate out of. And there's also the maintenance facility that's located in the same area as this building. The maintenance facility is being relocated to a new building off of the driveway from Manchester Lane. It's under construction now. It's about a 3,500 square foot building. But the features that we see on the site now, with the exception of the main building, are all to be relocated to that new area. So that's how we freed up a little bit more space for parking, a little bit more space for pedestrian access, little space for overflow parking, and space, of course, for our building that's proposed. So that's the general consensus, a general issue about what we're trying to do. The building is being proposed because, basically, the fitting of golf pros, other people, usually has to take place in the summertime. They don't have an indoor space to do that. So this building will have three hitting bays on the first floor. And upstairs on the second floor, there's a conference room, a couple of bathrooms, staircase to get up there, and a small lunchroom. And those are what I term the tenant facilities on the plan. It's really just the space for the occupants to be when they're, you know, when they're conducting some fittings going on. But essentially, the project isn't going to increase any more people coming down to the site. They have about 10 events a year where they might have a few more people than just individuals coming down for fittings and what have you. And, you know, it's not like a grocery store where we're going to have increased traffic coming down Manchester Lane for the purpose of, you know, buying clubs, being fitted, doing whatever golf professionals tend to do at that level. So we see it as a situation where the traffic flow should be about the same. There's not really any more employees being brought in. All the facilities, the maintenance, and the hitting bays and test facility will remain as they currently are. So there's not really going to be any more traffic, with the exception of maybe a little more in the winter. Because the indoor facility now will allow them to conduct those fitting operations year-round, where typically, they were only able to do that in the summer months when they would be outside and set up a tent on one of the large tees and then deal with the fittings, whatever they do down there. I mean, Charles can probably speak better to that if you have any more questions. But that's really what had happened, is we have maybe some annualized increase in traffic during the winter months or off-seasons when we would normally not be able to conduct any activities on the site. The plan set that we submitted, we submitted a 12-drawing plan set that indicates what we're proposing to construct on the site. The first sheet was the cover sheet that gives us, basically, the orientation of the project on the 138 acres. I didn't really point that out. But the 138 acres is indicated in the yellow line. And almost centrally located to the site is where the new visitor center, as its term, will be constructed. Just down to the end of this little hill, that's where the maintenance building is. There's currently one maintenance building there. And it has a sister building of the identical dimensions that, like I said, is actually 3,200 feet, that'll be built down in there. And then the things like the fuel dispensers, the bins to hold the trap sand, the aggregate things that they use on the fairway down there, they'll all be moved over to maintenance. And then this area will be focused entirely for the fitting operations of the company. This plan is our general notes plan. You might notice that we also have a sedimentation erosion control plan, pre- and post-construction stormwater management. As you probably were, conservation reviews, stormwater management. We filed with conservation because some of our work is going to fall within the 100-foot buffer zone to a BVW. So we filed with conservation. They are also the administrators of the town's stormwater bylaw. So they're taking that. They're going to have their review consultant review our stormwater report. We're waiting to hear back from them. And I suspect, as per normal, you know, they'll have some comments. There'll be a need for some plan revisions. And we will do the plan revisions both for conservation and for planning board as well. We're trying to use the same set of drawings for both conservation and planning, just for consistency's sake. With contractors and with town boards, everyone will be reading from the same sheet of music, so to speak. A few test pits that we did. We have some, we have in the stormwater management drainage basin area, we had to do a couple of test pits in there to determine where the water table was, the character, the material. We're also putting a new septic system in for the new building, which will be located on one of the tees, which I'll show you when I flip through the plans. So those test pits indicate the character of the soil that's on the site that we'll be dealing with, with stormwater and with Title V. This is a portion of the existing conditions plan. This is the existing building over here. I guess we'd call that to the west of the site. The automated hitting bays are here. There's a long fairway that runs to the, I guess, to the south, let's call it. And that's to remain pretty much in its current state and form. There's a 16-foot-wide driveway that comes from Manchester Lane that discharges onto a paved parking area. There's a maintenance building here. There's a fuel storage building. There's a building over, not a building, but bins for the aggregate that I spoke about. And then there's a couple of other features from past stormwater management systems that we did for the Acushnet Company and the town. Conservation Commission reviewed and approved under a couple of other plans. There's a golf tee over here to the east. This is, all of this area here is the area that'll be modified to receive the new building. So we're really just redeveloping the site with newer features and combining all of our maintenance with maintenance and operations, so to speak, with operations. This is the driveway from Manchester Lane, the building that I just spoke of. This is an area of upland and some wetland around it. We had ECR, an environmental firm, for Plymouth Flag, the boarding vegetated wetland. And we've defined an area for our stormwater. So we didn't really have an appropriate area at the proper elevations over by the building. So we had to be a little creative with our stormwater system and put a drainage basin down here and our sediment four bays further up. And we piped the water from our pretreated water from the sediment four bays down to the drainage basin. Drainage basin, where we can't bring any water into that unless we have 44% TSS removal. So that's what we had to do, a sediment four bay to catch basin or deep some manhole in order to achieve that 44% TSS removal before we discharged down here. So that's what we proposed. But that's what exists there today. And the fairway that I spoke about previous runs here to, like, the southwest. This is a layout of where our new work, what our new work will look like. We're proposing to match into the existing driveway. Just off the corner of the building, there's a fire hydrant at this location, which will be relocated onto the site. And we're going to continue on to the, into the parking area with a 16-foot traveled way, using the same pedestrian access points off of it. This is actually in the same line as the existing driveway. So we're really going to remove that old deteriorator pavement and replace it with new material. We're going to also build some new pedestrian accessways in front of the building and reorganize the parking lot. Going to expand the parking lot a little bit. There's 20 parking spaces down there. We're proposing to put 29. The 29 works well with the amount of people that work there at the site and how they operate the facility. We're also showing an overflow parking area, about 100 by, if you can see that number, 100 by 65 feet of crushed stone. So when they might have a conference, say, at headquarters on Bridge Street in Fairhaven, they have a group of 20 people or 15 people, and they want to come down to, I don't know, be fitted for some clubs, they might get on a small bus and drive down there as opposed to each person individually driving. And that's what we set this up for, is really for bus parking for that purpose. It's not a tour bus for people to come and visit and watch what goes on down there. It's really for the customers of the Acushnet Company to visit for whatever purpose they're there for. So that's what we have for a parking area, all of our utilities. We're going to try to run our utilities underground with water, electric, some propane. There's propane over here. We're going to run that underground, utilize the same service connections to the existing building and provide new service connections inside our new building to accommodate the use. The septic system, as I said, is going to be located on top of one of the existing golf tee. It'll be a septic tank and a pump chamber and a force main that will discharge the effluent to that location. This is another little small feature, is a small piece of drainage that actually extended from down here up to the isolated wetland to the north. That was put in many years ago to alleviate a wet spot that was down at that portion of the site. We're looking to relocate the piping to the east of where it exists today, but connect it to the existing piping at the location of the walkway and utilize the outlet area as it exists. This is essentially repeated the same plan, other than it's really the utility plan. The other one was the layout, gave us the dimensions of things. This plan here is where most of the work is, is the site grading and utility plan. You can see that we're shaping this driveway and we're shedding the water to a sediment four bay that's located on the north end of that parking lot. We're picking up some, the drainages from the parking lot. We're picking up the drainage from that crushed stone parking area as well. Additionally, to the catch basin we proposed in the paved surface, we show a stone infiltration trench on the back of that stone parking lot to capture any stormwater that will be generated from it. It'll be discharged into the trench and then back into our four bay. And when we leave our four bay, this is the outlet pipe from the four bay, catch basin, infiltration trench, we'll run our outlet pipe down to the drainage basin that's further to the southwest. So our pretreated water will run through this drain pipe and go down to the drainage basin. Drainage basin will mitigate the increase in the rate and the volume of the runoff. In addition to a small portion of the TS, total suspended solids, the bulk of the suspended solids will be treated in the structures and in the sediment four bay. This is our building. The building is proposed to be just about the elevation of this tee. This is the tee where the tents would normally be set up, and the hitting bays are orientated down the fairway. There's three hitting bays there. Really affords the company an opportunity to deal with more than one person at a time. You can have a couple of people. You can schedule a few more fittings. It's really to facilitate, you know, the growth of the industry and to help the company better serve their clients. This is the golf tee where the septic system is. It's really being relocated somewhat to the east. So we're going to be excavating that material, moving it over to the east, re-turfing it, and placing our septic system underneath that. And this is the little bit of additional drainage that's being, that exists here underneath it, which would be underneath the tee, under the new construction. So we just slid that a little further east just to maintain the same basic elevations and grades because we would expect the same condition that we remedied with that drainage system to occur over here, just by the nature of the creation of that tee. This sheet here is the drainage basin sheet. You can see that our four bay is up here, and we run about 300 feet of pipe, go into another four bay. Actually, there's two four bays at the north end of this drainage basin. We also have a stone, another stone trench on the edge of the road, of the driveway coming in. The driveway coming in, it's sloped to the wetlands. And all that runoff continued unmitigated for many years into this wetland area or the upland that's adjacent to the wetland area. We just felt that, under a review by whoever, they're probably going to ask us to mitigate that flow that runs across that paved surface. So we decided to just try to collect it all the best we can, let it sheet flow across the paved surface into a stone line trench, and then discharge that into a deep some manhole and then into our sediment four bays. So we're picking up the drainage really from the roadway all the way to the north. There's a small piece of fairway that'll drain to it. But there's a lot of undulation of the fairway, and there's a little bit of features in that fairway. So it's not just like a, you know, like a ball field, football field, whatever, that's straight and leveled and sloped off to the opposite side of the road. But we just felt that it was appropriate to do that. And then we outflow out of our drainage basin into an upland that's immediately adjacent to the BVW. This sheet, sheet number nine, shows everything together. So that's how it all kind of fits in one place. It was just too large of a scale to actually adequately show everything that we need to show, particularly for construction and construction pricing. The remaining sheets are the details of construction. On that drainage basin, in addition to that swale that we have in the front, there'll be a wood guy grille to protect anybody, any drivers down there from driving off and driving into the basin. Then we'll have a chain link fence. But we prefer to have the chain link fence on the backside of our drainage basin. The entire property, as it is right now, is all enclosed in fence. And it just would be, it just looks a little more attractive to have that chain link off to the back of that as opposed to right up against the driveway as it is today. So we thought that was an improvement. And we'll leave that up to, see how you guys all feel about that. I think it was a reasonably good idea. We show a cross-section of our roadway pavement that we have. We're going to go with four inches of bituminous, one and a half inch top, two and a half inch binder on four inches dense grating of 12-inch gravel base. Similarly, we have our granite curb sidewalks, crushed stone parking area, the overflow area. We expect that we may encounter some groundwater when they're building the building. So we have a groundwater, a de-watering basin designed for the plan. We also have a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the entire project, this project and the maintenance building. Titleist, they hired, who was Woodard and Curran, I believe, was the name of the firm, to prepare a comprehensive stormwater pollution plan for the construction activities. So that plan has been prepared. It's in effect. It's been filed with EPA. And we're in reasonably good shape with that, at least that sound we feel today. Continuing on, the pavement markings, the infiltration trench, details on the water, the fence, the wooden rail fence that I spoke about, our drainage manholes, soap stabilization material on any steep slopes, is what we're proposing. Other than that, I think hydroseed will work just fine. And again, more details, cross-section through the drainage basin with the two, 10, 25, and 100-year storm elevations on that that show where they are in relationship to the overflow spillway. This is the floor plan of the new building. These are the hitting bays on the first floor. So we have an audio room here, a lounge, and one, two, three, three hitting bays. That's where the golfer and the pro will be there. And they'll do the fitting of the clubs for the individual. There's a mechanical room, bathrooms, and stairs going upstairs, and fitness room on the second, a fitness room on the first floor. On the second floor, overlooking the tee, they have a conference room that has a retractable wall that you can put in. If you need to divide it in half for smaller groups, keep it larger for bigger groups. There's just a small kitchenette, so to speak, just where the coffee machine would be and maybe an underfloor refrigerator. Men's and women's room, the elevator to the first floor, and a small lounge. And that's what I term the tenant facilities. That's where, you know, that's where the people that work there will be part of the day, I would think. And this is the elevations of the building. So this is what the building would look like looking from the fairway toward the hitting bays. These three doors are the overhead doors to the hitting bays. That's the room. I think that's the window to the lounge. And this is the area facing the parking lot, in the east and the west, the west and the east building elevations. And I don't know, Keith, do you want to add anything on that?
No, I think you, I mean, I think Bill, Keith Boyle from Cube3. I think Bill's explained it, you know, very well overall. So we tried to tie in what we've done here to what we're doing at the headquarters for the renovation as well. Just some materiality, like where you're seeing the gray, just to texture the IFIS that's similar to what's there now on the current, where they have the offices and some of the mechanical hitting areas. And then just there's a kind of a faux wood material that we're going to use just to bring some, you know, a depth, a little bit of color, a little bit of contrast to the IFIS. So it's a blend of what's there, functionality, a bit of cost savings. And then really on the, you know, where the hitting bays, the conference rooms up top, just that view out towards the fairway. And just trying to keep a really clean, simple, refined building and let the function really dictate what is on the exterior. So that's kind of it in an overall very quick nutshell.
So like, normal operating hours would be normal business hours. Nothing really in the evening, nothing too early in the morning. I think the use is pretty consistent with what's going on down there now. And with that, we're happy to entertain any questions you may have about the project.
Gentlemen on the board, any questions? I know David had a bunch, but I think he answered most of your questions. David, you awake? Well, David gave you a sheet to answer, ask some questions. And the only thing that I don't think you answered is, how was the number of parking spaces determined? You just added nine onto the 20 that you had, correct, sir?
That's pretty much it, yes.
All the other questions, can you describe what the tenant facility means? You describe that to us. Will the traffic be intermittent or all at once? You explain that to us. What days and hours? You explain all that to us. And how will this impact the neighborhood relative to traffic? What is the expected increase in trips? And you explain all of that to us. So you answered all of David's questions. Gentlemen on the board, any questions at all? Rick, you all set?
No, I mean, it seems like a pretty well thought-out proposal. It's kind of the exact opposite of the mini-mart that we just approved. This one is not near anything or anybody, as opposed to tucked in right at the center of town. You know, you've got plenty of area to build the facility. You know, in terms of traffic and parking, you're so far away from Manchester Lane that any traffic or parking problem is going to be isolated on the site and it's certainly not affect any of others or the adjacent street. You know, until you decide to hang a sign out there that says, "Retail Golf Sales", I think, hey, I'm being facetious. I think you're all set. It looks like a great proposal to me.
Gentlemen and gentlemen.
It'll improve some of the stormwater issues that are out there now. It's increased the tax base for the town. I think it's a good project. It's increased the tax base for the town and I, I think it's a good, a good project.
I agree, Bill, sir. That's great. This is a public hearing, so is anybody for or against of the audience?
Steve, you gotta say something. You're the audience. That is a great product.
My dad, gentlemen, do we have to make a motion on this?
I can make a motion to approve. I can issue the letter to Pam if you guys vote to approve the project.
Yeah, I, I don't see why not. I mean, subject to stormwater approval by, by the stormwater board.
The only other thing would, we close the public hearing next to the meeting would just be signing the additional paperwork that is to be prepared. But other than that, once, my knowledge of it, once I issue the, the letter to Pam of the decision, that should be all set.
David, you want, I asked all your questions that you gave me.
Yes, sir. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, um, yeah, I, I saw that the questions were answered. I'm, I'm good with the project. I think it's a great project. I just caution the board in an effort to avoid the 88 Wing Road fiasco where planning board approved the plan and then stormwater change, is going to change things or could change things. I would just think it's prudent, although we don't have any issues with it, if nobody does, just to continue for a month to make sure the stormwater permit has been issued so that we don't end up with a situation like 88 Wing Lane where, you know, the, the plan was approved by us and obviously changes had to occur and then they got to come back to us for an amendment, you know what I mean?
We'll take it all into consideration.
Up to you guys, you know.
I, I, I agree with Dave 100%. You know, I think that we're continuing with conservation for the same, same reasons. You know, I think it'd be wise to just continue it, make sure that we can maintain that same theme of everybody on the same page with the same drawings and what have you. I don't think, we understand where you're coming from, we appreciate the favorable review that you're giving us tonight, but I think in the best interest of the project as a whole moving forward, continuation would be, would, until everything is settled, would be in order.
Okay. I would make a motion that we, we hold action on this till our next scheduled meeting, which is...
Which, you have a scheduled date that you'd like?
Nine through the 16th.
June?
Yes.
Either one's good for me.
They're not going to, they wouldn't have stormwater approval by the ninth, would they?
Probably not.
All right, 16th?
We can even, we can even push it back to the 23rd.
I won't be around the 23rd. Sure call.
I'm going to be not here on the 16th, but you guys don't need me, you can do it.
Yeah, let's, let's do it the 23rd.
23rd.
I mean, we're all here right now, so we only need three of us to, to act on it, so.
You all set with that, David?
I'm good on the 16th. If you went to the 23rd, it would allow two con con meetings because they're meeting on the eighth and the 22nd. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the 23rd would be the best date. I would make a motion, we continue this public hearing to the 23rd of June.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
David?
Aye. I'm a nine, thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for your time, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
My dad, item number two, discussion for me partial covenant release, definitive subdivision plan entitled Manise Estates, following partially completed laws, lot nine, 10, 14 and 15 on Allison Drive.
That's been floating around for, it seems like years.
Okay, good evening for the record, Steve Giosa with Site Tech, civil and environmental consultants, representing the developer of this particular project, Manise Estates. This is a subdivision, it's approved a few years ago and it's been under construction. And Dan Manise, who is the proponent of this project, previously appeared before you. We got nine of the 17 lots released from the covenant over the last few years. He is now ready to move to the next couple of lots, so out of the 17 lots, we have nine already released. I've highlighted them in yellow on the exhibit. The four lots we're asking for release tonight on are highlighted in blue and then that'll leave three lots remaining that would not be released from the covenant at this time. And again, Dan is, is looking to proceed. I think he has potential sales of at least one of these lots moving forward. So we'd like to see if it's okay or acceptable to the board to get a release on these four lots that we've requested.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I mean, what's been done?
How far is the road completed?
Well, the road, the utilities are in, the road's been constructed, there's binder down, drainage basins have been constructed. So it's really the final paving on the road that needs to be completed, obviously bounds it as built at the end. I believe that...
Is that road completed, the one that goes out to Wing Lane?
Oh, the one, yeah, the one that goes out to Wing, yeah, that one's completed. That was out there yesterday.
That sub road there?
Yes. Yes, that Margaret, Margaret Lane or...
Margaret, Margaret Street is here.
Yeah, it's the one that intersects Margaret Street.
Comes in here.
Yeah, yeah, that one's completed. As far as Allison Drive, there's, there's a sidewalk that's noted on the plans that still hasn't been completed. There's, there's quite a, quite a few things that still need to be completed and complete three lots of the town. I'm, I'm just a little hesitant, like my recommendation would just be, I'm a little hesitant in terms of that, if there's no perform, or bond in place for the roadway.
How long has, how long has this been going on as, as, as it is?
So there was, the paperwork that I had, there were 10 lots that were released back in August, on August 3rd, 2020. The plans that I have that were signed by the planning board.
Has the BVW been out there to do an inspection?
Not that I'm aware of. This was signed, well endorsed on 4/25/19, so.
19?
Yep.
So what's there left, three lots?
Well, he's got...
If, if you were to release, there's seven left right now to be released, correct?
Gotcha.
I mean, I...
Is the chairman?
Go ahead, David.
Yes.
I'm just curious if the engineer has a roundabout approximate ballpark figure to complete all the works?
Uh, no, we did not prepare an estimate of that. I mean, obviously we can, but we did not prepare an estimate at this point.
Um, I think I would like to see one, especially with only three lots remaining. I'd also like to see a recommendation from our highway superintendent to see what he thinks of the road construction out there.
You said some sidewalks weren't completed all?
There's only one sidewalk.
Yeah, there's only one sidewalk on the, well, from this plant and southern portion of it. And it runs up along to, towards the cul-de-sac from Blaze or what was Blaze Drive previously.
Unless you want to drop in?
Maybe we could come to a compromise?
Well, I was going to say, why don't we keep four lots and let them have three? Lots got to be worth a lot.
They're asking for...
Yeah, I ask for...
So I spoke to Kelly, the assessed value for the lots of, as of last year, between 140 and 100,000. That, that was as of last year, obviously there's been a huge market boom, so that could be significantly different as of now.
My thought was we release two right now out of the four and as for written estimation of Dan Manise, look at it, make sure that it looks like it's legit before we do anything more.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think that's reasonable, we'll have them keep it five. Is that okay with you, Steve?
That's acceptable. We, we can put an estimate together, get it to the office here and then also get it to the, the highway superintendent and...
So which two do you want?
I thought my client was going to be here tonight, so...
I got some dots. You want us to throw dots and see which one we get?
Let's go with 14 and 15 at this point, if we can. That would be these two lots here on the project. And again, we'll put the estimate together, I don't think it'll take long to do, but it'll take a little bit of time to get the review completed, so we'll, we'll come back at a later meeting.
Yep. Gentlemen, everybody okay with that?
I have the paperwork for the other, for those two lots. I mean, we, only you three are capable of signing because you're here for them.
The three amigos.
Yeah, for a while.
You're never leaving, so.
Say never.
14 and 15, is that correct?
Yes.
14 and 15, so I've got 14 and 15 right here.
Christmas Dallas is... I would make the assumption that we release 14 and 15 from the covenant from four Manise Estates.
Is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rick, Mark and Brian?
Aye.
Mark and David?
Eight and nine, I'm a nine.
Okay, we're all set with that? You get the paperwork on that, Doug?
Yep, I will get copies.
Do we have to sign any of these now, right now?
We can, we can pick them up from your office after you process them.
Yeah, I know, I think Mark's signature needs to be notarized on it, so once all that's completed, we can take care of it.
I'll have the client come by and pick it up.
Okay.
When it's, when it's ready. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does Rick and Brian have to sign these two?
Oh, yeah, Rick and Brian do. So where it has by majority of and members thereof, so whoever made the motion can be by majority of and then members thereof will be Brian.
Okay.
And then Mark, when you get a chance, you'll need to go, go to Pam's office to have it notarized.
I'll try and do that tomorrow, Monday, is that okay?
Yep, that works.
Old business, discussion continue, A and R form, A plan access requirements. Want to do that or you want to do planner update, Doug?
Uh, Dave, what are you looking like on time right now?
I got a few minutes, I'm, it's hard to tell, I'm watching another meeting and it's 30.
So we're, we're doing, uh, we can move on to the A and R discussion or I can do the planner update.
Let's do the A and R discussion.
All right, let's do it.
My comments in case I disappear.
Yes.
Or I have to go.
Did, you guys receive his comments?
I did, I did take a quick, I did take off all of that.
I have a copy of them, if you'd like to see it.
I, I, I'd kind of like to rework it a little bit.
Okay.
Basically to put it more in line with A and R handbook, because that one's got the, that one stood the test of time for, for court challenges.
Absolutely.
Probably keep it a little, keep it simple just like it is in the A and R handbook.
Okay.
Not get into widths of driveways and, and things like that. I mean, the courts, from what I, from the way I take it, the courts have said on an A and R plan, what matters is do you have access today for the lots shown on the plan from the road that provides frontage to the building portion of the lot? That's very clear in the A and R handbook and that's what's, that's been the subject of all the, half of the court, the court, or the court findings that are, are in that. So that's one of the parts that definitely want to, want to rework.
Okay.
With lots worth 100 to 200,000 dollars a piece, I would presume that there would be a court challenge if we were to not decide to sign one.
David, you got anything before you have to go to the next meeting?
He made a few comments, I did, I did, I did see those. I, I, like I said, I, I wanted to take another shot at it.
Sure, that's, that sounds good to me.
Okay, gentlemen? Motion to revisit this?
Yep. I make a motion that we revisit.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
That said, we haven't had a four A plan submission to create a new building lot for some time now.
Yeah, Xenith will be coming in for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Really, real quick. All right, so Mr. Kelly has asked me to come up with a kind of a flow chart for every process we have, so down to an A and R, common driveway, special, special permit for a solar field, just something A to B, oh, A to Z, like how somebody off the street could go through the planning process essentially. I know we had a solars spreadsheet before, I've just started to update it a little bit. I met with Pam, Pam Kelly, Nicole this past week, just kind of trying to come up with some cohesion between departments and figure out what's missing in terms of paperwork and discrepancies within paperwork. As of right now, it's just a draft, the planning board does have any recommendations, it'd be greatly appreciated. I'm currently preparing the other, we have another six flow charts that I'm working on at, at this point. And then in terms of solar moratorium, we had Park Drive come in and pretty much request a letter stating that they were grandfathered under, under the, the current zoning of what, what was prior to the solar moratorium. I, I don't think we necessarily need to issue a letter, like they, they had their project permitted before the, it was approved at town meeting. They are already, all intents and purposes, grandfathered in.
The special permit has got a timeframe on it.
It's three years.
And that would be, after, after that, they lose their grandfather protection?
Yes, after that, yes.
Okay.
And then, so previously...
Even if they want to renew?
It's a new...
It would be under, they'd have to renew under a new...
They'd need a new permit.
Under the new, under a new permit, so...
The only, the only exception that I've ever seen to that is that if there is a project that is underway and the building commissioner deems that the project has been continuing to completion in a...
Forward motion?
Yeah, forward motion. There's, there's a particular wording for it, but basically you can't start the project and stop it for five years and it's still grandfathered. You have to, you have, if you, you have to start the project and continue it, continue to progress. Continue it to, to completion.
Yep.
In a, in a speed acceptable to the building.
Yeah, that's part, that's part of our special conditions too, because within one year of the issuance of the building permit, they have to complete construction. If they don't complete construction in that year of issuance of the building permit, they have, they have to petition the, the planning board to extend it. So I had a chance to speak to town council a little bit about the solar moratorium and how our set of conditions play into what we're allowed to do moving forward. And he, I talked to John Eichman, he had an interesting case to show me from the attorney general and what they had recently approved in Hockington in a bylaw that they had passed. And the attorney general, I wouldn't say he was opposed to anything, he did put a lot of cautions on what Hockington had passed in terms of the way the courts are looking at solar fields and renewable energy at this point. We can't, we're, we aren't going to be allowed to prevent it in any district. It, essentially if that goes for appeal, the courts are going to end up ruling in favor of the solar companies, so we can just guide the certain sizes depending on the districts. We can impose certain bonds or sureties in place for clear cutting of trees, like just little, little caveats like that. And I'll be sharing the Hockington and attorney general ruling on their bylaw with, with the board soon.
Can we get a copy of their bylaw?
Yes, yeah, I, I'll have that sent out to you.
If you could, if you could have him post that, have Paul post that on the, not post it, but send it out to us, via email, that would be marvelous.
So speaking, did you two guys get the emails last time?
Yeah, I did. I, I will again, I did not, I did not...
I did. I had talked to Paul earlier today, because I didn't get anything on Tuesday. Could be my computer, could be putting on a spam, putting it on somewhere, so we're going to look at all that.
One of those attachments was pretty big, so...
It could have been.
Sometimes if the attachment's too big, it just won't go through.
I think that's what I...
And I will, I will, I have not reviewed all 167 pages of the previous comprehensive...
Oh, we're getting there. All right, so I, what I handed you is just an example of the first page of our standard set of conditions we use for solar fields. We look at condition number four, so the board reserves the right in accordance with the requirements of MGL 40A, section nine, the zoning bylaws and fall in public hearing to modify any portion of special permit where it is determined that the public interest and purpose, purpose of its regulations would be served. After speaking with town council, we should seriously reconsider... Oh, we're getting there. All right, so I, what I handed you is just an example of the first page of our standard set of conditions we use for solar fields. We look at condition number four, so the board reserves are writing, "In accordance with the requirements of MGL 40A, Section 9, the zoning bylaws involve in public hearing to modify any portion of special permit where it has determined that the public interest and purpose, purpose of its regulations would be served." After speaking with town council, we should seriously reconsider that condition. Um, once we issue a special permit, it is extremely difficult for us to go back on, on that approval and, and bring them back in front of the planning board. Unless that, we make condition number four extremely detailed and give a reason why would we, we would be bringing any petitioner back in front of the planning board. That's something we would probably have to consider removing at this time or moving forward.
Well, I mean, the other, the other way to look at it is, if you, if you don't ask to re, if you don't ask to reconsider, it's a non-issue.
Yep.
And, and, you know, you certainly can use it the way it says to try and get some cooperation from the proponent towards whatever the issue is.
Absolutely.
You know, like, a lawyer, a lawyer told me one time, it doesn't have to be legal to be effective.
All right, fair enough.
Obviously, obviously, if you come in and say something that's gonna cost them a quarter of a million dollars, you're going to court.
Absolutely.
But, but just to have it there for items like the corner of the project that's, the screening isn't quite as everybody had envisioned.
Absolutely.
You know, I, it's nice to have something like that there to at least threaten revisiting of it.
Absolutely.
I understand what you're saying.
I can agree with that, though, as long as everybody's on board with keeping that in.
Yeah, I mean, the difficulty would be explaining to, I don't know, butter that, you know, we're, we can't say no to the project at that point, and if we have any changes, they've gotta be reasonable and, and not something that's going to overburden the project with additional new costs.
All right, we'll move on to the master plan update. So...
Doug, so you feel, Doug?
Well, I sent you guys the attachment. Um, I've, I've gone through it once already, I'm going through it a second time again. Um, there's a lot that wasn't achieved the first time around, and I think a lot of that we'll be able to carry over the second time around. Um, there is a, a strong push right now from the, the Board of Selectmen's Office to start pursuing, acquiring bids for the master plan and, and start figuring out funding sources and where we're gonna be able to start updating the master plan. So I have an RFP certainly put together at this point. I put a rough timeline in place of when we can start going out for bids, and what that would look like, and the whole process for that. Um, so when I have that document finalized and reviewed internally, I'll be sending that out to the board for another review, and then we can start really tailoring that and, and setting a date.
I mean, if, if the selectmen wanna do it, and they're willing to come up with the funds to accomplish it, you know, I'm, let's go.
Yeah, I mean, we're getting, we're getting pretty creative right now, so I know, speaking with the, the new representatives for the House, working with Jamie and town administrator, we've, in the process of acquiring $25,000 through an earmark, we're looking at the possibility of doing other transportation earmarks that would be able to do studies with the MBTA commuter rail coming and what those zoning requirements are gonna look like, if there's any safety improvements we're gonna need. And I, moving forward, I think one of the big safety improvements that the community's gonna have to look into is, in particular right out here, right in front of Town Hall and Slocum Street, those being two main access points over to where the commuter rail are. And pretty much from 2:00 until 5:30, cars are backed up over here. So at some point, I think a, a complete safety study needs to be considered, I hate to say a traffic light, but something to regulate tra, something to regulate traffic a little more, because that, if, if traffic flow's gonna be as intense as they're predicting it, um, very well, it could be backed up from the stop sign all the way to Bubba Lev. And we, as community, we should just be better, better prepared for that moving forward. So, um, working with Jamie and figuring out what, what studies need to be completed and what safety improvements will need to be proposed to the town. Um, we will also need to start forming a master plan committee and getting any lucky candidates that would like to be sitting on a master plan committee and any other residents that would like to, to be a part of that, too. So if the board has any ideas of anybody that'd like to, to join on that, I'm all ears and, and ready to start working on that. Uh, so we had a lot of questions about Chapter 4 to be, affordable housing. I know, Rick, you had asked me to do some research into that, and I did, did some extensive research into it. Um, so our hands are tied as a planning board. We have, there's little to nothing we can do. The, there's four different, uh, three, sorry, three different processes a developer can go through in terms of doing a 40B housing. So they can do a comprehensive permit, they can do a friendly 40B, or they can do a special permit. A special permit would give the town the most control in terms of what, what it'll look like at the end and what the density requirements are gonna look like. Comprehensive gives the town lease authority over it. And the friendly, it looks good on the developer, it looks good on, on the town, where the developer comes in, is willing to work with the community, and they're also working with the state housing agency in order to figure out what they want the, the affordable housing to look like long-term. Um, I also think there's a lot of negative connotations around what 40B housing is and, and like what, what they look like after. It's, it's come a long way at this point, and the state requirements for 40B housing is 20 to 25% of the units that are built have to be affordable, or filled with affordable tenants. And 40B can either be rent, rental units, or they can be purchased own units. And the affordability at that point changes with, within the state requirements. So if we have a developer come in with a comprehensive permit, that goes through the ZBA. Um, the ZBA is gonna ask for every board to provide feedback, um, any town employee to provide feedback. There's gonna be numerous public hearing processes for, to go through the ZBA and to gather, again, resident feedback on all of that. Um, so because the town of Acushion is at 2.3% of the subsidized housing inventory and the state requirement's 10%, when, if, when and if the ZBA does decide to, um, if they, if they decide to deny a permit, a comprehensive permit, then the developer will go to the state housing agency that they had their initial project permitted through, and they'll appeal it. The state housing agency is gonna tell the town that you have to approve the permit and the, the development's going in and probably remove a lot of the conditions the ZBA put on their permit to begin with if they did approve it. Um, so that, that's just kinda where we stand with it right now. Um, I know we have a large push right now for age-qualified housing. And the beautiful thing about age-qualified housing is it counts as 40B. It'll count towards our subsidized housing inventory. So if we can target a developer and target a location within town where we can do an exclusive age-qualified housing, housing complex, something along lines of 10 houses or, or something like that, that would increase their subsidized housing inventory a substantial amount.
Does, does it have to be the whole project?
Nope.
So somebody could come in and say, we're gonna make half of it over 55?
Yes. And as long as they're willing to work with the state and go through that process, then that would count towards their subsidies.
Is 55 the number, or are we gonna say age-qualified?
So that, that, that's up to the state, we don't...
Okay, I'm just asking.
Yeah, Ma- Massachusetts laws are, are pretty specific in terms of what, what's qualified as age-qualified. Similarly, with what, what qualifies you as A, or, or would be like A, um, low income. Like, there's just certain things that they base off of, like the mean, mean area income and, and how that's adjusted with your, your total income and what qualifies you to be low, low, um, what would qualify you to live in, in a 40B unit. Um, we have the MBTA community self occurring. Um, so looking at it, the zoning requirements are gonna be 15, if I remember off the top of my head, it's 15 units per acre. Um, for me, that looks like multi, multifamily housing. And essentially, if the town doesn't, once we become an MBTA community, if the town doesn't adopt zoning require, the MBTA's zoning requirements, uh, we won't be eligible for specific Massachusetts grant funding opportunities, specifically through DOT, Mass Works, a lot of roadway infrastructure stuff that the town desperately needs. Um, it's not saying that 15 units have to be built per acre, it just has to be zoned for it, and it has to be practical zoning. So like if a developer did come in or purchase the land, they can have the ability to. We can't just put, put a zone in the middle of the reservoirs or something like that. So, um, that's kinda where, where we're at with it, and I'm starting to prepare, hopefully, I don't know if we'll be at, at it for next town meeting, but possibly spring town meeting have some set language in place for an overlay district that would accommodate the MBTA's zoning requirements.
That's great. Nice update. Anything else?
Uh, on my end of things, I'm, I'm gonna leave it at that, I think.
Doug, we're, right now, we're at, what percentage are we at?
So we are at 2, 2.3% of the subsidized housing inventory. And just to give you like a rough idea, so like the way the law's set up is, the developer, they're gonna look to maximize their profits in any way. Um, but the state housing agencies will limit how much profit the developer can make. So it being said at 20, like I believe it's 20% of the units have to be affordable if they're purchased own, and 25% of the units have to be affordable if it's, if they're rental units. Um, and if that's the case, no, I, I feel like no matter what, how many units you're adding, it only being at 20 or 25%, you're still adding units to our normal housing inventory. It's not hitting our subsidized housing inventory. So it's just gonna be a catch-up game no matter what we do. That's kinda like the way I, I, I view the law and how it's set up.
Yeah.
But it, it's not a bad thing, like, just looking around the South Coast of Massachusetts in general, housing is a major issue. Um, and the state's looking to do things about it. They're, they're forcing communities' hands to, to start getting creative with it. So it's gonna all come down to how we sell it to the residents and, and how we educate the residents on, on what is gonna be entering the community and how it's gonna benefit overall. So we'll get, although the developer gets funding from the state, I believe the community also gets a certain percentage of funding that'll increase the tax stock, like it'll do a lot of different things in terms of revenue for the town long-term, um, that I think we'd be able to sell the community and not raise your taxes, but keep them where they're at. So.
Thank you, Doug. Great job. Gentlemen, any more questions for Doug?
I'm all set.
Guys? Mail, we're gonna need?
Mail, a bunch of, uh, public hearing notices from other communities. Would you like to read them?
Nope.
And then we've got meeting minutes.
Gentlemen, I don't know if you had the opportunity to read the minutes from, where am I here?
May 5th.
May 5th, 2022?
I didn't have a chance to. I did. Need email? I would make a motion, we have, we have submitted.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. With that, I sign this, I will give this to you and...
Perfect.
Paul has to sign it.
Yep.
You want to keep these covenants?
No, I need those.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I need, yeah, I, I...
You just want me to sign them, or do you want me to go with Pam and sign them?
Uh, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna get, I'll bring them down to Pam. I'm just gonna have Paul make several copies of them, so we have on file.
You want me to sign these two?
All right.
Why not? Our next meeting will be...
Well, do we wanna do the two for next month, or are we just gonna do the 23rd?
Just the 23rd.
Just do the 23rd. We're not gonna have any more solar arrays for a little while, so...
That's true, so...
We don't have to worry about those, so we didn't get much public opposition to the new driving facility or the new fitting facility on Manchester Lane.
Wouldn't even know it's out there.
Right. That's a place that you really have to know where it is.
Yeah.
No one drives by that.
I didn't even know it was there until they stopped. I had no idea.
Oh, they, they do everything by the book. Like, made sure I went out, nothing at the site beforehand, went over everything in detail on the plan. Um, they, like I said, by the book.
Yep. Is there a motion?
Closely publicating.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four out of five unanimous. Thank you very much, folks. Have a happy Memorial Day, and we'll see you next month.